Good morning, everyone. We're going to call the meeting to order here. So is there any, just option of the agenda first thing on there? Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Thank you, Deputy Reeve and Council. No, there are no additions.
Okay, just looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Mr. Deputy Reeve.
Yeah.
I'm just, I just wondered if we want to add that emergence item and it would have, would have been the FCSS, or at least comments about the FCSS payments from the MD to for transportation. It's, I guess it's not going the way it should have been and folks are waiting, so is that something we can talk about or is it handled?
Through the Deputy Reeve. I would expect that both Deputy Reeve Crick and Counselor Kreviak would give us an update in their council reports. And administration will come forward with a process for you at the July 9th meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Counselor Subcheck, for moving to approve the agenda as presented. Sorry, I got to sign in here. And we'll call for the vote on that. That's carried, thank you. So move on to adoption of the minutes from June 11th. Thank you, Counselor Slager, for moving to approve the minutes of the June 11th council meeting as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. I guess we'll jump down to the seven, 7.1 development application.
Good morning.
Morning.
This is development permit application 2024-D-140 for Wild Rose Disposal Incorporated, Robert Hesterman. The applicant is applying for a minor rural industrial use for non-hazardous waste collection business. The property is located 650 feet east of the town of Bonneville on Highway 659, south of the Barrier Lake multi-lot subdivision. Adjacent properties are Country Residential and the Quarter Section Remnant, which has a multi-lot area structure plan on it, which was adopted in 2010. The applicant has been operating Wild Rose Disposal from the existing shop and yard site since 2016. They have been licensed with the town since then, but they had not obtained a development permit for the operations from the municipality. They are in the process of selling the business and require the permit to be in conformance with the land use bylaw. Wild Rose Disposal Incorporated hauls non-hazardous solid waste from bin sites throughout the Lakeland to the shop, then ships it to landfills. Their office is located onsite and the shop and yard are used for truck and bin storage, maintenance, and repair. As this business has been operating for eight years, there will not be an increase in noise or traffic. They are fastidious about keeping the yard site clean and operate the vehicles at a low speed to prevent dust and noise. They utilize approximately 3.5 acres of this 9.5 acre parcel. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on May 28th, 2024, and to the town of Bonneville on May 29th and 2020, uh, May 29th, 2024. We have not received any concerns from neighbors and the town of Bonneville is okay with this development. Recommendation for development permit application 2024-D-140 is approved the request for minor rural industrial use for a non-hazardous waste collection business as a discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, Section 58, and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the land use bylaw with the following conditions: As per Section 52 of the land use bylaw, outdoor lighting shall be located so that rays of light are not directed at an adjacent site, do not adversely affect an adjacent site, and do not adversely affect traffic safety. Shall comply with Consolidated Public Safety Bylaw Number 1812. Alberta transportation approval is required. This permit is valid for the current scope of the business. If expansion is projected, a new development permit shall be required. This permit may be revoked at any time if, in the opinion of the development authority, the use is or has become non-compliant, detrimental, or a nuisance to the character and amenities of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion or motion here?
Mr. Deputy Reeve, I guess I'm just a bit surprised that everyone's okay with it. I, I don't know, it looks like the image you've got there just, it kind of looks kind of not all that tidy and stuff, but like, if no one's complaining about it, I guess not much we can do about it. You're good with it, it's your area, I think, is that?
Yeah, well, it's, there's no, no one complained about it, so. Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve this, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kreviak, for moving that council approves development permit number 2024-D-140 for a minor rural industrial use for a non-hazardous waste collection business on Plan 0526672 Block 1 Lot 1 within northeast 9615 west of the fourth as a discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, Section 58, and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the land use bylaw for Wild Rose Disposal Inc. with the following conditions, 1 through 5. Any discussion on the motion? Yeah, I'll call for the vote then. That's carried, thank you. We'll go on to 7.2 development application, 144.
This is development permit application 2024-D-144 for Kevin and Sylvie Roth. The applicant is applying for an intensive recreation use for a 20 seasonal powered site expansion and power to six of their existing 80 site seasonal campground. The property is located west of Range Road 460 on the east side of Mariel Lake. Adjacent properties are residential parcel, quarter section, and remnants. The applicant operates a seasonal campground with 10 full-service sites and 70 dry sites. They would like to add 20 powered sites and bring power to six sites adjacent to the proposed sites. This will bring the site up to 100 stalls. The application complies with Section 35 of the land use bylaw for campgrounds. The Mariel Lake area structure plan indicates that the, that a portion of this parcel is intensive recreation, which is near the location of the proposed expansion. The non-service site renters have few options, a few options for septic. They can empty off-site, onsite removal by septic companies. Some of them have their own MD-approved septic holding tanks and some rent porta-potties. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on June 6th and we received no concerns. Recommendation for development permit application 2024-D-144 is approved the request for an intensive recreation use for a 20 seasonal powered site expansion and addition of power to six sites as a discretionary use as per Part 6, Section 35, and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the land use bylaw with the following conditions: As per Section 69.6 of the land use bylaw, the minimum setback shall be front yard 38 meters from the center line of the adjacent public road, side yard 6 meters, rear yard 6 meters. Applicable electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Shall comply with Consolidated Public Safety Bylaw Number 1812 regarding noise and nuisance. As per Section 59, uh, 52 of the land use bylaw, outdoor lighting shall be located so that rays of light are not directed at an adjacent site, do not adversely affect an adjacent site, and do not adversely affect traffic safety. The developer shall ensure that emergency vehicle access is not obstructed at any time. Campground design and maintenance shall have regard to the Fire Smart Guidebook for Community Protection as amended from time to time. A fire pitch shall be approved by the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority.
All right, thank you. Any discussion or just looking for a motion on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy, I'll make the motion to approve this.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Kreviak, for moving that council approves development permit application number 2024-D-144 for an intensive recreation use to add 20 powered seasonal camping sites, addition, addition of power to six sites on Plan 1721848 Block 2 Lot 2 within southwest 31595 west of the fourth as a discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, Section 65, and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the land use bylaw for Kevin and Sylvie Roth with the following conditions, 1 through 3, and then, yeah, 1 through 3. All right, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're going to go on to 9.2.1, Road Licensing Bylaw.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Administration is seeking approval for roadway license bylaw number 1866, authorizing the MD of Bonneville into an agreement to license the road allowance south of the southeast of 1860 of 5 in accordance with our policy 3A.018, as shown on the map on Appendix A. The purpose of this roadway license is to be used for grazing of cattle. Council gave first reading on the May 14th, 2024 Regular Meeting of Council. Public notification was completed as per the licensing of roadway's policy and the MD Public Notification Bylaw with no written concerns received. We did not receive any comments or concerns at all. So administration is recommending that council give second reading to bylaw number 1866, and furthermore, if carried, to proceed to third reading.
Okay, just looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion for a second reading.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Slager, for moving that bylaw number 1866, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville, number 87, roadway licensing, be given second reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
I'll make a motion for third reading.
Thank you, Counselor Subcheck, for moving that bylaw number 1866 be given third reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll go on to 9.2.2 Concert License Application.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Administration has received an application by a landowner for a license to conduct an outdoor concert within the MD of Bonneville in accordance with the MD bylaw number 808, Appendix A. The Wild North Eclectic Society, WNES, is a not-for-profit organization requesting a license for the Summer Rush Music Festival to be held at the property located at 63115A Range Road 415A for August 23rd, 24th, and the 25th of 2024. This is the fourth year applying for the license through the municipality. Given the controlled success of the previous events, WNES is applying to have the event at the same location and at, and in the same format. That is camping onsite, family-friendly environment, limited tickets available, and cost. The attendance of the, at the festival will be a maximum of 500 general tickets plus the addition of approximately 100 musical artists, volunteers, and vendors. The Summer Rush Festival will provide an opportunity to highlight and support local artisans, vendors, who will have the opportunity to participate at the festival free of charge. Date and time of the concert: Friday, August 23rd, the main stage would be running from 4:00 PM to 10:30 PM, a DJ from 11:30 PM to 1:00 AM. Saturday, August 24th, main stage would be from 1:00 PM to 11:30 PM, DJ would be 11:30 PM to 1:00 AM. And on Sunday, August 25th, the main stage, 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We've attached Appendix A, the MD bylaw number 808. Appendix B would be the WNES 2024 Concert License Application and Attachments, and an Appendix C, WNES Concert Aerial and Location Map. Reference to the strategic plan would be Goal 3, Promote Community Development. Cost and source of funding: The $100 application fee was paid by the applicant. Communication strategy: The applicant will be notified in writing of council's decision. And administrative recommended action is that council approves the application for a license for the Wild North Eclectic Society to conduct a Summer Rush Music Festival on their property located at 63115A Range Road 415A for August 23rd, 24th, and 25th of 2024 as presented.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion?
Mr. Deputy Chair, yeah, interesting, it's been going well for a couple years, I see what, no reason why we wouldn't extend it. I just had a comment about that bylaw though, because you probably, you probably looked at it and thought, man, that's really old too, right? So probably time for a review of that one?
Yes, through Deputy Reeve, through counselors, we are looking at that to, to review and replace that one, or?
Thank you.
For sure.
So I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Counselor Slager, for moving that council approves the application for a license for the Wild North Elec, Eclect, oh, sorry, I can't even say the word, Electric Society to conduct the Summer Rush Music Festival on the property located at 63115A Range Road 415A for August 24th, 3rd, 24th, and 25th, 2024 as presented. Any discussion on the motion? I had one question. There are a limit of 500 people, and just curious why that is.
To be honest with you, I'd have to get back to you on that one.
Okay.
For what, why, it is in the bylaw stating that.
Yeah.
But I'd have to get back to you on that.
Esther's coming up here to.
Sorry.
Hey, um, thank you. The, from what I understand, it's more about the capacity of the land itself and the different events and whatnot that they have going on. They, they don't want to go beyond that, just because it would get a little bit too crowded.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? I'll call for the vote then. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, do we have time, Susan, to go to the, for the annual report here? Because I know we have some delegations and a public hearing coming up here shortly. Okay. So we'll move on to 9.3.1 for the 2023 Annual Report.
Good morning, Deputy Reeve and Council.
Good morning.
Administration has prepared the attached annual report for council's information. The Municipal District of Bonneville is committed to open and transparent government and strives to provide reporting that aligns with this philosophy. Transparency in government is an industry best practice designed to improve information to the public through accessibility to information. Publishing an annual report is a component of a fulsome transparency model that improves accountability for the use of public tax dollars. Appendix A attached is the 2023 Annual Report. It does align with council's guiding principle. We believe there should be openness and transparency in decision-making. This item is being funded in the 2024 operating budget. The annual report will be posted on the MD website under the council agenda for June 25th, 2024. The recommended action is that council accepts the Municipal District of Bonneville 2023 Annual Report as information.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions for Susan? Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Slager.
That's a, like, it's pretty good. It's like, it's lots of pages and, and lots to go through, so lots of effort put into that, so that's, that's good. I just wanted to ask you, there was just a, I think it was just a typo, but on the, on the, like, the fourth page or whatever, when you, what is the page number? Let me find it. The Municipal Overview, maybe that's page four. It just said population median age is 40 years. And then under it said population median age, and then there's a, a number, so I think it's, I think it's the number of people, not the, if you find out, it's, um, just called, it's called the Municipal Overview, and it's a nice kind of picture of trees and stuff and, or branches.
I found it, thanks. And pardon me, where was the typo?
The, I like the census stuff, it's good, but it says the population median age is 40 years. You see that one? Right at the bottom of that page? And then under it says population median age again, and it says 5,487.
I see, through the chair, thank you so much for pointing that out. We'll have that corrected.
And so the second number was supposed to be the, the number of people at that age or something, or, I assume?
Likely, because that's not the MD's population. We'll have that verified and, and corrected before it gets posted to the website.
So I was just curious, did you want to highlight anything? Because it's like 58 pages long or something, was there? And, and it's good, but should there, is there anything that you think pops out?
Um, I think that the, the whole thrust of this document is just to provide the community and council with information about our financial affairs, about each department. There's a brief description of each department and, and what we do at, for the MD. The financial information is, is included, and it, the 20, the 2024 budget is presented as well as 2023 operating results and a variance to budget. So it's a pretty good document as far as giving our community an overarching explanation of, of what we do with taxpayers' money and, and provides that information to the community.
And so I did have one more, kind of browsing through it, there was a comment about. There was a comment about the Aquatic Center? The Aquatic Center, and it says there's 4.5 million in, in an account. Is that still available though, or is, did it get eaten up by a fire hall?
Through the chair, that is the number at December 31st, 2023. Since then, the 2024 budget has been approved, and we did use some of that funding for the airport. Or, sorry, we did use some of that funding for the fire hall in Cherry Grove.
Okay, because that's kind of misleading, I think, to folks that were hoping that we were saving for a pool, or, yeah, for the Aquatic Center, so I, I don't know what, I mean, it's just a big statement, they're ending 2023, and I kind of got excited and thought, hey, yeah, we put money for a, for a pool and, but apparently it's not, I don't think there's anything in that pool fund now, is there? I think it all got transferred to, as a council decision, apparently got transferred to a fire hall.
Through the chair, I don't have that number at, at my fingertips. I don't believe that reserve was depleted, so I do believe there's a balance, and I'll just email council the, that information, if that's okay with you.
Sure, you can, you can find that out, and, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Deputy Reeve, I thought it was all transferred from the pool money.
Well, I do too, but, so that just means it gives Mr. Kreviak, or Counselor Kreviak, another chance to put that money back into that pool fund. Anyways, thanks, and so this will be on the MD website, so all the residents kind of have quick access to it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
One more thing that I'd like to point out, at the back of the document, I think it's the second from the back, or the last page before the cover, there is a list of documents that are available online that would complement this document, and so our, our residents can go online and scan these codes and research, well, the consolidated financial statement is one, council strategic plan, our mill rate bylaw, our procurement policy. There's a bunch of reserve policies that council has approved, and so that's valuable information as well, and it does complement this document.
Counselor Subcheck.
Yeah, on the pool fund, I know council made the decision to take that money out for very needed, fire hall at Cherry Grove, and if we want to start that pool fund, we, next budget, we can do it, as council, put it back in, next budget. Because I'm sure we're.
Just looking for a motion here?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to, is it approved or just?
Received information.
Accept, for information.
Yeah, it's, I guess it's amazing, like, there's a lot of, a lot of effort went into that one, so appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Slager, for moving that council accepts the MD of Bonneville Annual Report, 2023 Annual Report as information. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess another question, do we have time for the business plan presentation? No, okay. We'll take five-minute break here, and at 9:30 sharp, we'll come back for the public hearing. Okay, welcome back, everyone. We have a public hearing to go into, so bear with me as I try to. Okay, before we begin the public hearing for bylaw number 1867, road closure, cancellation, and sale bylaw, I'd like to remind those who wish to address the public hearing, the public hearings on today's agenda to register your name on the speakers list at the entrance to, of the council chambers. I'd also like to outline the process to be followed in this public hearing. We will begin with a staff report from administration, followed by questions of administration from council. Next, the applicant will have an opportunity to provide a presentation, followed by questions of the applicant from council. We will then call upon members of the public who wish to speak in support of the application, followed by those who wish to speak in opposition of the application. Council may ask questions of a public presenter during this time only. The applicant will then provide an opportunity to rebut anything they have heard or read in opposition of their application, followed by questions of the applicant from council only on information provided during the rebuttal. Finally, we will entertain any final questions of administration from council before closing the public hearing. Okay, and I'll just need a motion to open the public hearing. Okay, well, if there's no opposition to opening it, then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Seeing none, that's carried.
I'll make the motion to open public hearing.
Okay, thank you, counsel, okay, we'll vote on it here. That's carried, thank you. Okay, administration.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a public hearing for bylaw number 1867, which would authorize the closure and sale of a portion of government road allowance west of the southwest of 3360 of 3, as described in Appendix A. The parcel would also be consolidated into the southwest of 3360 of 3. Currently, this road allowance leads to a low-lying area, and there are no future plans for development of the road allowance. The applicant has applied to close, purchase, and consolidate the area into a 2.64 acre parcel located in the northwest corner of the southwest of 3360 of 3 to allow for a suitable building envelope on the property. A copy of the application for closure of the government road allowance was provided to Infrastructure Services, Agricultural Services, Public Safety, and the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority for review and recommendations, and there were no concerns. Excuse me. Council gave first reading to bylaw 1867 on May 14th, 2024. We have received correspondence from a neighboring landowner attached to Appendix B, describing historical concerns with previous landowners, as well as requesting that all property lines be clearly marked during this process to avoid any confusion about the boundaries between adjacent properties. If this road closure bylaw is approved, the applicant would be required to hire an Alberta land surveyor. The surveyor will locate and mark the exact boundaries of the existing portion of the southwest of 3360 of 3, along with a section of road allowance that would be closed and consolidated into the property. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay, seeing, Counselor Subcheck?
So this, you did say the surveying cost will be upon the purchaser, right?
The surveying cost, yes, that's correct.
In, in marking the property line there, it's, I think it's the adjacent ladder to the north that have the concerns. Are they just going to mark the, the corners? Are they actually going to, like, mark, mark out the property line so that they can, because it's probably all overgrown and bush right now?
So that would be up to the surveyor. The surveyor would definitely mark the property boundaries of the road allowance that's being closed and the parcel that's being consolidated into. If that landowner would like more marked of his property, he would have to hire an Alberta land surveyor himself.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Counsel, subject.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify, so thirty-three, or southwest thirty-three sixty-three, that's the little section that they want to build on, I think, the little triangular section?
Correct, if you can just put up the map.
And so I guess I'm asking thirty-three?
Yes.
Or the southwest and the northwest quarters, are they owned by the same person?
Yeah, so the road, there's a road allowance that fragments that northwest corner out of that parcel of the southwest of thirty-three. And with that road allowance on the west boundary and the road to the south, the setbacks on that make them no building area on that property. So with that closure of that road allowance to the west, that is no longer needed, it gives them setback distances in order to use it as a developable lot.
And so how big did you say that would end up being? Two point something six-three or something?
It's two point six-three as it is right now, and then it would add that other small portion to the west.
And so the intention, I guess I'm asking these questions because I'm always reluctant to sell road allowances, so you know, you think in twenty years, that little piece of a lake that dries out, I mean, is it, you know, then we could straighten the road, but.
So there's a reason that the road there curves as it is, because they didn't want it to go through that low-lying area, so the road itself already goes to the east.
Yeah. No, I'm familiar with the road. My daughter actually lives on the road, so I just, but I'm, yeah, just trying to figure out what the reasoning is, and they want to, because you can lease a road allowance forever, basically, through the MD, but they don't want to lease it, they just want to own it so they can build.
So if you lease the road allowance, you would still have that setback of one hundred and twenty-five feet, because it's a road allowance? If you close it, there's, the only setback would be the twenty feet from the side property boundary, instead of one hundred and twenty-five feet from the center of the road allowance.
Okay, so that's the, kind of the reasoning why they want to do that, so they can actually have a big enough property to build on?
Correct, yep.
Okay, that answer your question? Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, I don't see the applicant here for a presentation, so we'll skip that. We did have one written submission, and it has been provided in the agenda package, Appendix B, staff report, no further submissions were received. We'll now move on to anyone that wants to speak in support of the application. So first call here for anyone that wants to speak in support. Second call for anyone that wants to speak in support. And third and final call for anyone to speak in support of it. Seeing none, we'll go to presenters in opposition. First call for anyone that wants to speak in opposition of the application. Second call for anyone that wants to speak in opposition. And third and final call for anyone that wants to speak in opposition. Seeing none. Okay, is there any final questions for administration? Seeing none, just looking for a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you, Counsel Kerviak. My screen died. Thank you, Counsel Kerviak, for moving that the public hearing for item four point one be closed at nine forty AM. I'll call for the vote on that. Thank you, that's carried. All right. I guess we'll go up to nine point three point two to twenty twenty-five departmental business plan presentation. I don't know if we'll have to kind of pause partway through if we don't get through it, but we'll start it anyways and see how far we get, because we have some delegations at ten.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve and counsel. The twenty twenty-five departmental business plan presentation has been prepared to align with council's strategic plan for council's information. Business planning is an industry best practice that is utilized to strategically guide and focus efforts on established priorities. Council provided the strategic guide to administration with the approval of council's two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-seven strategic plan. Departmental business plans are developed to align with council's vision and to drive efforts for the achievement of council's goals and objectives. Business planning produces many benefits, both internally and externally. The following lists provide some of those significant benefits. Business plans are a tool to plan and execute priority work. They strategically focus efforts on priority projects. They serve as a communication tool within the organization to council and to the community. They ensure the organization is working with our political leaders. Provides a means to hold administration accountable for the work being performed. Provides the basis for annual budget development. Generates a culture of understanding where every employee plays a part in departmental achievements. Within each business plan, departmental vision and mission statements have been developed to more closely reflect the department's purpose. However, they remain closely aligned with council's vision and mission statements. These business plans also include a high-level list of the services each department provides for council's review and information. So our reference to the strategic plan is council, council's strategic plan itself, the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-seven plan. Established service level will be reflected in the preparation of the two thousand twenty-five operating budget and capital plan, and this presentation will be posted on the MD website in the minutes for today's meeting. The recommendation, I guess we'll get to that later, but the recommendation is that council accepts the twenty twenty-five department business plan presentation as information. And with that, we'll start with the, thank you, we'll start with the presentation. And since our C A O is on vacation today, I get to do his section too, so bear with me. So under the Chief Administrative Officer Service Area, you'll see department business plans for senior leadership team, customer services, legislative and information services, marketing and communications. The senior leadership team vision is the MD of Bonneville administration will continue to be focused on being a leader and innovator in local municipal governance, services and economic prosperity. And our mission is to support council in the development of policies and staff in the implementation of procedures, creating a safe, sustainable and prosperous community. The key services are executive leadership, interdepartmental communication, planning for municipal sustainability, oversight of municipal operations, unified voice, organizational innovation and organizational management. Under customer service, the vision is that we provide excellent, knowledgeable and professional customer service within the organization and community. And the customer service mission statement is we provide accurate services and solutions through a pleasant experience. The key services for customer services is internal and external customer service, internal and external communication, management and implementation of internal and external mail services, financial support, that is cash receiving payments and bank deposits, management of administrative building office supplies, and boardroom, council chamber and staff room purchasing and inventory. Legislative services, or legislative and information services is the next department. Their vision is the legislative and information services department is an expert in legislation and records management, and an innovator in local municipal governance and services. The mission is to support and ensure compliance in all legislative functions of the municipality. The key services are administrative secretariat and procedural support for council, support all departments with drafting and amending municipal legislation, support all departments with compliance to any applicable legislation, facilitate and ensure compliance of records management for the municipality, organize and manage municipal elections and censuses, manage and maintain the municipal records management program and staff compliance, manage all public requests for information, support records management with compliance in accordance with the Freedom of Information and the Protection of Privacy Act, provide advanced case management and administrative support for the municipal assessment review board and the subdivision and appeal board. The next department is marketing and communications. The vision is we are leaders and innovators in internal and external communications and trusted sources of information. Through our efforts, we are champions of the municipal organization and community. Their mission statement is we provide accurate, timely and transparent information while striving to showcase the MD as an enviable place to live, work and visit. Key services are internal communications, external communications, marketing and promotion of the municipality and its programs and services, brand protection, reputation management, catalog and archive photography and videography, emergency management communications and communications and marketing support for Kinisum. Under corporate services, finally, this is my area. This will include departments, the departments of assessment services, financial services, human resources and payroll services, information technology and occupational health and safety. The assessment services department vision is we strive for a prosperous economic future by providing our property owners outstanding customer service and tax assessment and insurance coverage needs while adhering to government legislation. Their mission is we establish an assessment role and a tax role for the purpose of collecting revenue for the annual municipal budget and providing insurance services for the municipality. Their key services are fair and equitable property assessments, annual tax preparation and recovery. They protect the MD's assets through insurance and risk management. They monitor community economic activity and growth. They adhere to legislation. They generate stable revenue, risk mitigation of revenues and customer service and information to residents. Financial services department's vision is we are the financial guardian, providing reliable, accurate, timely financial information. The mission is to provide financial guidance within the organization and support all stakeholders. The key services for the financial services department are guardians of financial records, establish internal controls and financial processes and procedures, accounts payable invoicing and disbursement of funds, accounts receivable invoicing and cash receipting, financial reports and statements. They manage the tangible capital assets, facilitate budget preparation and analysis. They provide customer service, both external and internal. They're a financial institution liaison, and they provide grant application and reporting. The human resource and payroll department vision is the municipal district of Bonneville is a leader, innovator and employer of choice in the region. The mission is we provide maintained confidential support services through the employment lifecycle. Human resource and payroll key services are, they provide employee support, payroll services, recruitment and retention of employees, benefit administration. They provide the framework to other departments for performance management. They retain employee records management, and they maintain confidentiality. Information technology department, their vision is the information technology department is a highly skilled and experienced team that leverages technology for the efficient and effective delivery of services to empower our community through digital innovation. Their mission is to provide innovative and secure technology solutions for a prosperous community. Their key services are data integrity, business continuity, technical support, systems and data security, procurement and maintenance of I T infrastructure and I T project management. And finally, occupational health and safety department, their vision is we are a passionate team, leading engaged employees who demonstrate a positive safety culture. Their mission is empowering employees to make safe choices. Their key services are to educate workers, to advise and support supervisors and all employees. They track and analyze injury, illness and property damage in the workplace. They provide and act as health and safety resources. They provide an annual audit, or they perform an annual audit to maintain a certificate of recognition. They continuously improve the safety management system. They provide workplace compensation board case management, and they administer the online training program and records through Bill Strainer. The next section is environmental and protective services, and I would ask Louie Gendolfi to come up and provide the report on this section. Are there any questions related to either the C A O's service area or to corporate services service area?
Counsel, subject.
I just got a for understanding, page ten, reputation management, what is that?
Under which department? So, so the marketing and communications department is council and our organization's conduit liaison with the community, with the public. And they have a role to play in ensuring that the information that goes out to the community is accurate and complete. And so by doing that, they're protecting the MD's reputation to ensure that they're not putting out anything that isn't accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing else? Okay.
Good morning, council. I'm here this morning representing General Manager Matt Yans, delivering the business plan presentation on behalf of Environmental and Protective Services. This business plan is going to cover agricultural services, public safety and waste services. Beginning with agricultural services, the vision of this department, Ag Services Department is an energetic and diverse team responsible for protecting and promoting our agricultural lands. The mission, proactively balancing safe, innovative and sustainable agriculture and environmental programs now and for future generations. Key services provided by agricultural services include vegetation management, roadside mowing, also agricultural protection, education and enforcement for the public, agricultural equipment rentals, seed cleaning, plant inspections and licensing, work collaboratively with local research associations, as well as one of their priorities, and crop inspection and disease monitoring. Moving through to public safety, the vision of this department is, public safety is a professional and adaptable team committed to promoting safe communities through effective education and enforcement. And the mission, quite simply, is to promote safe communities. Some of the key services provided by public safety include crime prevention, industry contracts and commercial vehicles through education enforcement, municipal enforcement through bylaws, animal control, once again, education, traffic safety, including education and enforcement, and also addressing emerging concerns in the community, such as emergency management or other needs, collaborations with other agencies as well. And finally, with waste services, the vision of Waste Services Department is to be a leader and innovator in waste reduction and diversion for a sustainable future, and the mission is to pursue a greener environment through waste reduction strategies and responsible stewardship. Some of the key services provided, front load waste and recycling collection in certain communities, curbside waste collection, class three waste landfills, also the management of class two waste transfer stations, waste diversion programs, roadside cleanup program, agricultural plastic recycling program, maintenance of landfills and bin sites, public communication and education, clearing of roadway. and education, clearing of roadway hazards and illegal dumping, and school presentations and tours. They work with the kids as well. Any questions, any comments on these three departments?
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
I'm here presenting the Infrastructure Services 2025 Business Plan. So, Infrastructure Services Departmental Business Plan, we have the Fleet Facilities and Utilities Department, along with Transportation Services Department. For Fleet Facilities and Utilities, our vision is that we are efficient and responsible for the delivery of services to the stakeholders. Our mission is to provide exceptional services and maintain and update fleet and infrastructure. Our key services in Fleet Facilities and Utilities are to operate and maintain fleet facilities and utilities, provide safe facilities, oversee capital projects such as roads, bridges, drainage and buildings, water and sewer services, customer service, budget management, and asset management. In the Transportation Services Department, our vision is that we are leaders in safety accountability and efficiency in public work services. Our mission is to provide and maintain quality services to enhance the safety and livability of our community. And in Transportation Services, our key services that we provide are road maintenance and repair for all four seasons, signage, drainage and flood control, brushing, bridge management, or bridge maintenance, airport maintenance and operation, Christmas lights and decorations, support other departments, environmental approvals, road use agreements, responding to resident and requests and customer service, driveway flag service, assist fire department, working with industry to develop routes, and 24-hour emergency response. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
So, I'll be presenting Planning and Community Services Department. Our department incorporates asset management, economic development, Kinnisou Ridge Resort, parks, and recreation, planning and development. Our Asset Management Department vision is to be the catalyst for the implementation of sustainable service levels at the M.D. of Bonneville. Our mission is we support, coordinate, and facilitate the integration of asset management throughout the M.D. Our key services is we manage the geospatial and non-spatial data. We manage and support asset management best practices with the departments, collaboration within departments to determine documentation of levels of service, produce visual maps, dashboards, data collections, and applications, create and maintain a comprehensive register for all physical assets. We support the development and use of state and the infrastructure reports and asset management plans for all asset categories, and we provide education and training to our organization. Economic Development, Economic Development has opted to use the vision and mission from Council's strategic plan, as it is very much in line with the department. So, that vision, just as a reminder, is that the M.D. will be a leader and innovator in local municipal governance, services, and economic prosperity. Mission is to develop a safe, sustainable, and prosperous community. Economic Development's key services, in alignment with our adopted plan, is business attraction, retention, and expansion, collect, interpret, and present data to promote investment, diversify the local economy, and increase employment and revenue opportunities, and to partner with internal departments to support other strategic M.D. priorities. Kinnisou Ridge Resort, our vision there is to is to be a premier recreation and tourism destination known for promoting an inclusive environment and exceptional experience and experiences, sorry. Our mission is to be a premier all-season destination for adventure and recreation and hospitality. Our key services at Kinnisou Ridge is our ski hill, which includes our ski and snowboard lessons, programming, equipment rentals, and servicing. And in summary, it's about forty-one acres of skiable terrain serviced by snowmaking, two fixed quad chairs, and two carpet lifts. We also have our high ropes course, which is our adventure park. We have our tube park and carpet lift in the winter, our target golf in the summer, and it's a location for community events and private bookings. We also have ample schools, summer and winter camps and programs, restaurant services, customer service always at the prominent in mind, and general outdoor recreation, as French Bay Campground is now, the administration of that is administered through Kinnisou. Our Parks and Recreation Department, our vision is that the M.D. of Bonneville Parks and Recreation Department, including community services, will continue to help build vibrant communities that foster quality of life, wellness, and appeal to residents and visitors. Our mission is to develop a safe, sustainable, and thriving recreational community. Our key services is to manage and maintain our park spaces. This includes ball diamonds, ice rinks, and playgrounds. To manage and maintain our recreation campgrounds and their associated amenities. To manage and maintain our boat launches and docks. To handle our trail maintenance and development. This includes our walking trails and Nordic trails, as well as multi-use trails. To operate our Tourism Visitor Information and Interpretive Center, to support, provide support to our community groups, to our community services programs, and to maintain our municipal reserve maintenance. Planning and Development, the Planning and Development Department is committed to efficiency, focusing on public education, engagement, and facilitating planning and land development. Our mission is to facilitate the development of a safe, cohesive, and sustainable municipality. Our key services, customer service, education and engagement, development and safety codes permitting, regulatory compliance, and land management. Any questions?
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Deputy Reeve. It's not so much a question maybe as just a ton of comments, and, you know, I've sort of been thinking for years about our economy here, and so focus area number one, building a viable and diversified regional economy. And I'm, you know, I mean, I guess council has to maybe put more effort into thinking about how we can be leaders in something, you know, because, I mean, this is all great stuff, but, you know, I'm not sure how we're kind of diversifying the regional economy and, you know, we're doing what we're doing, right? We're, we're doing the stuff we have to do. We're working with Kinnisou, and I mean, hopefully, that's a great win for us, and we can kind of get it going. But like I, you know, we go to these conferences, and some of these communities actually sort of develop something new, or they're, they kind of partner with the industry, and they're doing different things. And so, you know, I think maybe council can come up with some ideas too on how, how we can kind of diversify our regional economy and do kind of more than what we, you know, what we do. And so, I mean, I guess that's just a comment. I'm not sure how, how we get there, but, I mean, I guess one of my pet projects was the hydrogen thing, and we could be leaders in that, maybe in this area with just one of some of the first hydrogen fueling stations or something. But I'm just hoping we can, as a council, come up with kind of other ideas that we think would be great for this area to kind of maybe put us on the map a bit more, and I don't know. That's, you know, because all this stuff's good, but I'm not sure if it's just, it's the day-to-day stuff, right? It's, that's what we do. And I think maybe we can try to do other things too, so I'm not sure if council has any comments.
Well, I guess, I guess you can bring it up as a council resolution or something if you want to, still getting to something for sure.
There we, thanks. Yep.
Okay, so with that, what the boundaries that you have before you represent a committed effort by every established position in this organization. We have our own business plan facilitators that are trained in-house and support our departments in preparing these business plans, and every full-time individual in this organization has participated in their department business plan. So, I'd like to recognize the effort of the folks in, in the organization. They have done a fabulous job of making, pulling this together and making sure that council has reasonable plans that do work towards fulfilling council's strategic, strategic plan. So, with that, I would like to request that council accepts the 2025 Departmental Business Plan Presentation as information.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion and accept this information.
Thank you, Councilor Slachek, for making the moving that council accepts the 2025 Departmental Business Plan Presentation as information. Any further discussion of the motion?
I just want to say thank you to all the staff for everything you do, and pray you guys all have a safe summer.
All right, we'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I believe we have a delegation here. So, we will go to five point one, and it's the Stars delegation, so welcome to the microphone.
Good morning.
Good morning, thanks for coming out today.
It's so nice to see all of you again and to bring you your annual update. First and foremost, though, I'm Glenda Farnin, the Senior Municipal Relations Liaison for Stars, and I've had pleasure of working with your council for more than a decade now. And we're going to have some changes moving forward as there'll be more information to come in the presentation. So, I'm going to be taking on a bit of a different role as I work with all the municipalities for the entire province in order to build further relationships with more of the municipalities and the rural cities and the towns and villages that, well, that lie within boundaries. So, I'd like to introduce Shannon Paquette. She's from our Edmonton base. She previously had done a lot of event work throughout your area with longstanding event, community events, and so she's shown an interest in the municipal side. So, she will be joining my team now, and she will be bringing you your annual updates moving forward, and so she'll be working with you. I'm still around, but Shannon will be working with you more through the years to come.
Right on. I look forward to seeing you then, Shannon.
Okay. So, we'll get started. Stars is the dedicated critical care provider in Alberta, and through that, we provide critical care anywhere from our six bases located across all of Western Canada. In a worst-case scenario, Stars is your best hope. Next slide, please. So, as an update on the financial side, you know, previously, we had a ten-year affiliation agreement in place with Alberta Health Services for twenty percent government funding, which expired in 2020, and we've been year to year since then. I'm hoping that you saw it just recently, Alberta Health Services did make an announcement, and we have secured another ten-year long-term service agreement now in place at the fifteen million dollars per year block funding. So, fifteen million dollars, so it's pretty much almost double what they previously were giving. Still about forty percent of our overall entire budget, which includes our Link Center and education and training administration, the whole ball of wax. So, with that, of course, we are very fortunate to have had a longstanding, almost three decades of a successful Stars lottery that is well-respected across the province and across nationally as well. That generates just over ten million dollars net every year, which basically almost pays for one base in Alberta. So, we're very fortunate and grateful to every single Albertan that continues to participate in the Stars lottery each year. This still roughly leaves us eighteen million dollars per year that must be fundraised. This is for Alberta alone. So, of that, we, it is generated through corporate partners, as well as many longstanding community events, and of course, our municipal initiative program that you have been a part of for more than a decade. Next slide, please. So, here's where we are now on our update across the province and into northeastern B.C. So, everywhere that you see green represents a municipal district or county across the province that is an annual supporter of Stars like the M.D. of Bonneville. So, since last year's update, we have added nine more rural municipalities, as well as ten more urban municipalities. We've even now welcomed City of Brooks to join the City of Grand Prairie. So, as we progress and move forward, we're at about ninety-four percent of all Alberta is in united partnerships. Seventy-five percent of them are on budgeted fixed rates and to alleviate fluctuations. So, you recently, in the past few years, have moved to a fixed rate of support instead of per capita rate as well. The red boxes represent our nine municipal leaders. Last Friday, we just welcomed Birch Hills County. Last year, we welcomed Sturgeon County. So, these are municipal leaders that have significant dollar values in their protective services budget. So, we are a line item each year in their budget, and they are all represented with their logos on Stars helicopter. Now, the yellow boxes represent our regional leaders. These are all that are contributing a minimum two dollar per capita, up to ninety dollars per capita, everything in between, whatever fits in their budget well. As well, the little stars represent complete regional partnerships. So, these regional leaders in the yellow boxes, they are now helping us to build relationships with towns and villages that lie within their boundaries that are also supporters of Stars. So, as we move forward, those with the little stars have complete regional partnerships, meaning every town and village that lies within their boundaries is also a supporter of Stars, along with their municipal district or county. So, as you can see, this represents a really solid united effort across our entire province to support the enhancement of rural healthcare. Next slide, please. So, we'll have a look at a five-year overview, including this year so far to date as of May thirty-first, within the M.D. of Bonneville, plus including the critical interfacility transfers from your local two hospitals, which would, in your area, which would represent where, on a scene call, you know, that patient has maybe taken by ground ambulance to the nearest hospital, but because it is of a critical nature, then Stars is called to intervene and get that patient to tertiary care. So, this would give you a solid overview of what actually is happening throughout your area mission-wise. So, M.D. of Bonneville is averaging overall about forty-four missions per year. That's a significant amount of call volume as well. Also, last year, you had told us about the airshow that was going to be happening, and we were really hopeful that we were going to have that opportunity to participate. Thank you to Esther for also helping us to connect with the proper people, but we have found now that we are not able to participate this year. They were, there are so many, because of the hundredth anniversary celebrations for Air, Air Force, that they have so many military helicopters coming that they weren't able to accommodate us with the additional needs that we had to, like, house the helicopter overnight, and then we found there's absolutely no accommodations available. So, you're going to be a very busy area on that particular weekend. So, we look forward to, hopefully, maybe in, I think, airshows are every other year possibly, so we look forward to the opportunity to participate in two more years. So, we really appreciate that invite again, and we will look forward to that. Next slide, please. So, this is an update to the postal code project that I previously had presented to you, utilizing patient postal code, no other patient information, other than the postal code where that patient lived at the time they were flown by Stars. Back to 2010, we were able to access data, so in total, within M.D. of Bonneville boundaries. So, this includes the resident communities list- So in total, within M.D. of Bonneville boundaries, so this includes the resident communities listed, there's been a total of 285 residents that have been flown by Stars. As an update just for last year only, 17 area residents have been flown and they are listed there. Please keep in mind that this also includes all rural residents that have a postal code for these particular resident areas. So on the right-hand side though, out of those 285 total residents flown, 243 were picked up somewhere within the M.D. of Bonneville. 25 residents were flown from 22 other locations across two provinces. So in total, your area residents have been flown by four different Star spaces across Western Canada. When you see on the right-hand side, the red dots represent these locations where other residents were at at the time that they needed Stars. Accidents and illness do not happen just because you're close to home. And this is really a testament to the value of our partnership together for your residents, that they have access to Stars and at no cost to them across all of Western Canada where they may travel. That's an important factor. Shannon.
Hello.
Hello.
So next slide please. So this is a picture of our Emergency Link Center, which is our central dispatch center out of our Calgary base. They handle the logistics of coordinating critical care responses 24/7, 365 days a year. The Emergency Link Center receives approximately 36,000 requests, so that's almost 100 a day. And as Stars is the dedicated critical provider in Alberta, we're also in charge of dispatching HALO and HERO in the northeastern and southeastern part of Alberta. When an incident occurs, ELC can link together all the necessary resources on one call, which saves precious time for the patient. And at Stars, we are transport agnostic. So that means that our crew's not only limited to traveling in the helicopter. We provide care by going by fixed wing, ground ambulance, or even virtually. So an example of this would be if we were dispatched to a rural hospital. While the helicopter is on its way, the transport physician could be providing guidance to the rural staff. And then once we have the patient and we are on our way to the receiving hospital, the transport physician is lining up the OR and specialists so that we can bypass emergency and go right in. So this, as you can imagine, saves precious minutes on both ends. Next slide please. So at Stars, we're very proud to be an innovative leader and we are a pioneer in our industry. We were the first civilian organization in Canada to have night vision goggles and as 50% of our calls occur at night, that was a very important addition. We were the first helicopter EMS program in North America to carry universal blood onboard. And due to the increase in severe trauma patients that we care for, that has been increased to four units of blood as needed. And this is brand-new as of last October. We have also implemented our massive hemorrhage protocol, which reverses anticoagulation and promotes blood clotting in severe trauma cases. So that gives us extra time to get to the hospital. So the International Air Medical Transport Conference, it's a very rigorous competition and we've competed for the last 21 years. We have an internal competition to see which two crew members will have the privilege of representing Stars on the international stage. And what happens is they have to triage multiple patients simultaneously. And in the last 21 years, we have come in first place seven of those years, but we've been in the top three every single year. So that is really a testament to the level of care we are providing your residents. And so to conclude, I'd like to just recap. I don't know if Glenda mentioned, but we're celebrating 40 years next year of serving Albertans, which is very exciting. We've surpassed 60,000 missions to date since our start in 1985. We average around 10 missions a day. And especially due to rise in costs such as fuel and training and medical equipment, we are so grateful for ongoing support from communities such as the M.D. of Bonneville at the fixed rate of 12,000. Your support and partnership is so important to us and we are so grateful. So thank you.
Well, thank you for all you do as well.
Just a question. Yeah, I remember when Stars kind of started, of course, you know, we started with one helicopter and then more and more. So how many helicopters and how many different locations are you flying out of?
Great question, thank you very much. So previously, we had eight BK-117s and then we had progressed to have the larger AW-139, just three of those out of three different bases. Then we soon did find out that that was really not the model for us to move forward with. And so that's when the decision was made that we would transition to the H-145 that we currently have. So last year, we were able to incrementally during the course of the last five years of a capital campaign, and we sold off the previous BK-117 fleet, attributed those proceeds to our capital campaign. So we have 10 H-145s in the new fleet now. More than $150 million capital campaign is complete and all 10 helicopters are paid for. And they are located out of our bases in Winnipeg, Saskatoon, Regina, Calgary, Grand Prairie, and Edmonton. So six that are always stationed at each base and four that will rotate throughout for anything unforeseen that may happen, you know, mechanically or otherwise, as well as two that are always in either a 400 or 800 maintenance, hour maintenance. So that gives you the 10 in total.
Well, right on.
Are there other questions?
Any other questions?
So we, in celebration of more than 10 years in partnership with the M.D. of Bonneville, first and foremost, I want to sincerely thank you for the opportunity to have been working with your council. Each year, I've always looked forward to bringing you further information, so please know that I will miss you. But at the same time, Shannon will do a wonderful job of keeping you well-informed. And with that, for celebrating more than 10 years of partnership, you are helping to enhance not only rural healthcare, but also quality of life for your residents with your partnership with Stars. So we would like to present you with a plaque to council saying that Municipal District of Bonneville, thank you for your partnership with Stars and your dedication to saving lives.
Well, thank you so much.
We appreciate that and wonder whether or not there's an opportunity for a photo.
Absolutely, we will take a break here while we get a photo opportunity and then we'll come back for the next delegation.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind just getting the motion and then we can recess if that's okay?
Yeah, we're just looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion, accept this as information.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Subchuk for moving that council accepts the presentation by Stars Shock Trauma Air Rescue Service Foundation on the update of new initiatives and mission statistics as information. Any discussion? Seeing now, I'll call for the vote. And before we break, just want to say thank you again for coming in and for all the work that you do. My son was flown, I don't know if it was with Stars, it was fixed-wing aircraft, but he was flown, he was a month old and he's a happy boy today. So it's very important the work you guys do, saving lives, we appreciate it. Well, welcome back everyone. We are going to go to our second delegation here for Portage College, so welcome up to the microphone.
Is this on?
It's on now.
Good, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing us to come and provide an update on the college. So there's, one of the things I wanted to address before I get into the presentation is that we did have a question last year about an ability to break down the student enrollment between the M.D. and the town. And so I took that back as an action item, but what I learned from that is that we use postal code, so it's not a very exact science. So you'll notice in the package today that I've included both the enrollments to Cold Lake because I know that that draws from the M.D. folks as well as the Bonneville slides. But I'm here to tell you some good news. First of all, that the college is in very strong financial health and enrollment health at the moment. In July, I will have been at the college for 34 years. And in 34 years, other than in 1997, we had a real struggle to ever break what we call full load equivalence at the level of 900. And this year, we're going to be pretty close to 1800. So we've just about doubled our enrollments over the last years. And along with that has come good financial health, both because the classrooms are full. In fact, most of our programs have waitlist. And we also have international public-private partnerships that are turning some revenue into the college, which has been very helpful. We are having a significant amount of investment this year in classroom modernization and program growth. And Donna will talk to you, Dr. Donna Faleticek is our VP Academic and Research. And so she'll talk to you about program growth. But we're really happy with how things are rolling out and there's some good news, particularly in Bonneville with some activities that we're doing. So I'm not going to go through all the data, but if folks had any questions on that, I'm happy to answer questions about it. I've provided some other specific information that's coming out of our continuing education, so I think that's slide 10. And that is that we have had some great opportunities to work with the high schools in Bonneville and are doing driver training as well as class one and three training out of the Bonneville area. As you know, each year I also point out that we do have a community adult learning program that operates out of the C2 Center. It has provided great outreach into the community, including areas of digital literacy and newcomer welcoming. So we've got some digital classes and other things that are going on through the community adult learning program in the C2 Center. And the other information I wanted to share is that Lakeland College and Portage College partnered to do a study that we requisitioned to a company by the name of ACOM. And it was to get an analysis of all the projects that are happening in the Alberta hub region and understand what are they and how many employees are they going to need and then specifically in which trades. So I'm very happy to share the full report with you if you'd like to see it. But I pulled out of that particularly projects that are in the M.D. of Bonneville. And so out of the $19 billion worth of projects that are in the Alberta hub region, 17 billion of those are in Bonneville M.D. And they're the projects that you know about already, the pathways, the fighter jet and, yeah, and some other smaller projects. But these are all happening in the next six years. So what we're doing is we have a presentation that we are going to be working with Minister Jean and MLA SER to present both to advanced education but also to economic development about an ability to grow the trades training in our region. So it's a full list of trades and technicals, so also including power engineering expansion. And it's all based on this study. So you can see from the slide, which is slide 13, any of those trades that are in red are the ones where the jobs are going to exceed the number of people in the region. So we're highly focused on electrician expansion, power engineering, and then there are some others. And then what we'll be doing is partnering with Lakeland College where they have trades that we don't have. Either if there's enough for both of us to offer, we'll both offer or we'll be looking to see if they can bring some of it to our region. So maybe I'll just pause there really quickly and ask Dr. Donna if she could give you a bit of an overview of where our program expansions are at.
Good morning. So as Nancy stated, lots of growth in trades. And so if folks are unaware, our steam fitter, pipe fitter program, which we haven't had in a decade, is back in the fall at the Lakelish campus. And so we'll be offering steam fitter, pipe fitter to the region. We're looking at moving our electrical program, which is currently in Cold Lake, to Bonneville. And Nancy will probably be talking about that a bit more. And also expanding seats in the electrical program as well because of the study that's here. We're also looking at expanding seats in our power engineering program in the Cold Lake-Bonneville region, which currently runs at Lakelish, but we want to do a second cohort over on this side of the region. We also have made application to the ministry for a new, a couple of new programs, one in kinesiology diploma. That's a lot to attract our student athletes and recruitment there. Computing sciences, we got a certificate in place last year. We're expanding that to a diploma for 2025. That's a very in-demand field within the region. So it will include artificial intelligence and cybersecurity in the computer sciences diploma that we are also pursuing. One of the biggest things that's come to the college from all of our, straight across the region, from all the skill divisions is a shortage of teachers. And so we are making application for a first degree to offer a Bachelor of Education. It will run very much like our early learning and childcare program in the evenings. One program, one course a month, so people can continue to work and get their Bachelor of Education degree done. We know that there's a lot of folks that have families that are looking to transition to current careers and into education. And so we want to try to facilitate that as much as possible in the region. So we're looking at making our application on that this week. We also have put in a request for program, targeted program expansion dollars for addictions counseling because we know again that that is a very important issue that is being faced in the north with addictions. And so addictions counseling has been requested as well as occupational therapy. And physical therapy assistant is another program that we've asked for assistance in dollars for. And so there's lots of different programs, I would say, than what was currently in our program mix that are either coming onboard or we hope to have coming onboard. Most of them are looking at launches in the 2025 academic year.
Thank you, Donna. So I'm now going to speak to slide 15, which are some of the new opportunities that are coming, particularly to this part of the college's region. So we do have a very strong connection with Four Wing. Dr. Donna, myself, and Dawn Moore, who's the Associate Vice President of Academic from the Cold Lake Campus, had a tour of Four Wing about six months ago. What was very unique about the tour this time is that every department we went to had a list of things that they needed from the college to help with both attraction of labor, of civilian labor, but also people that are transitioning out of the military. And one of the first things off the deck is probably going to be the aerospace mechanical engineering structural, which I'm hoping you saw the press release on. We are partnered with the City of Cold Lake. We have the curricula from Okanagan College. We're busy hiring a subject matter expert and the city is working with us to obtain a facility for the lab. So that we're hoping to have launched in 2025. We are partnered up with the M.D. for SiteLink, which is September 18th is the day that the college is going to host the registrants of all of the participants of SiteLink. So we're excited to be working on that. And related to the Northern Lights schools, we actually have partnership agreements with all the schools to give free dual-credit courses to students. But in Northern Lights, we're actually going to be getting in partnership in a new way. We had a group that came and toured the Trades Exposure Center and we're going to be located in there as of September. As Donna mentioned, we're moving our electrical program from the Cold Lake campus over to that campus. We have scaffolding training happening with Seven Lakes. And then there's a local company that Ms. Ruth Isley is connecting us with to do rigor training. So those are the first three things that we're going to be starting at that site. But what's my hope is that once we're there and we have the staff that are there in the community, we'll be able to find other continuing opportunities. And of course, as you might recall, a number of our programs are blended. So for sure, at the campus, people will get support for any of those programs, including the diploma in IT that Donna mentioned. We just recently had introductory conversation with Mr., I think it's Henry, is his name Henry? The Fire Chief about emergency medical responder for the group that's here, both firefighters and others. about emergency medical responder for the, for the group that's here, both firefighters and others. And so Donna is working with them to see what we can do about bringing in an offering specifically to their location. And then we've got all kinds of what I'll call trades exposure things happening with the schools. So for example, this summer, we're doing Trades Exposure Summer Camp for the kids. It's an articulated course that has credit for the kids and it will give them exposure to four different trades. So in the proposal that we are taking to our own minister about trades expansion, even though that's not our ministry that looks after the high school, we've identified that a significant challenge is getting kids in the high school interested in these trades. So we're trying to work with the school divisions to get as much exposure and intro to those careers as we can happening right in the school. And we are also working with Lakeland Catholic, who has decided the way they want to try to do this is they're bringing the kids to our campus once a week for two hours a week and they get to rotate through four different career and trades exposure. The other thing that's happening in this area is we are looking to bring a face-to-face cohort of early learning and childcare to the Cold Lake campus likely. That will be aimed at international students. And, and we are hearing over and over that local daycares and, and even in the schools are having a hard time attracting folks. So we are going to bring that face-to-face offering in January. And, and there will be a consultation, it started today actually, and it'll be coming, sorry? Oh, sorry, it's fall, September. So we're bringing a group around to consult on affordable housing and community readiness for welcoming international students. So those were kind of the updates that I had, but if there, anyone has any questions or comments for us, I'm open to those, please.
Counselor Sawyer.
Thanks Nancy. You said, you said a tremendous amount though, so I gotta, I'm just looking at that slide. The one with connecting to Four Wing, the AME course and different things. NLSB partnership with, is that Northern Lights School Division, NLSD is it supposed to be?
It's Northern Lights Public Schools is their new acronym, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so I guess I'm trying to, well, you said a lot. So at the C two, you've done a little bit of expansion there, I think. But, so that's interesting. But you also talked about this, working with the Northern Lights School, whatever, and a trade center. And the location of that is?
It's, I don't know Bonneville to tell you exactly where it is, but it's in the industrial park. They have a gated trades facility where the drilling rig was.
Yeah.
It's that building.
Okay, and is that in the town of Bonneville or the MD of Bonneville?
It's in the town. It's in the town, sorry.
Was it in the town?
Yeah. Oh, beside Copper Tip.
Yeah, I've, I've seen this, I've seen the spot, so.
So and it does have housing attached to it too, so we're hoping that we can actually get training that draws from the region into there.
And, and so again, that was trade, that was trades training for, what were the programs? You just mentioned electrical.
Electrical is the start, scaffolding with Seven Lakes and rigor training. So rigging, I think it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Interesting. So, I mean, is there any chance that the C two center would be, because Portage pulled out of there several years ago, but.
Yeah, so we rent, we rent an office and a classroom and sort of a gathering area at C two. And that's how we facilitate any of our blended delivery. So it's all through there. So students that need exams invigilated or they need a computer for study space are taking advantage of that. I think what we need to figure out is what unique program we could bring and then what facility is available there. But at this point, we're starting with trades and it, that was the easiest move in for us. So the school division has given us that space just for the cost of utilities.
Okay.
Yeah.
Education degree, computer tech. So the education degree is a nighttime program and it's out of, out of Lakelish though?
It's online. So it'll be blended across the region, yeah.
And the computer tech?
Is online.
Is online also?
Computer tech? Oh, okay.
Yeah, that one, currently right now, the computing certificate currently right now is online. But because we expect a lot of international students probably applying and you need fifty percent of the program to be at least face-to-face, it'll be blended with some courses online, but the face-to-face courses at the Lakelish campus for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
I'm sorry, sorry, I did have, man, you said a lot, so.
That's okay, yeah.
The Site Link, you mentioned the Site Link. Say that again though, because it sounded like it was going to be in Lakelish, like sort of.
No, it's cold, at our Cold Lake campus. So we're working with Scott and we're hosting the registration night for the conference. And so they'll be coming to our new innovation lab at the Cold Lake campus. And then we're doing like a dinner and a meet and greet for all participants.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you ladies for coming out.
Thank you very much.
For the work that you do.
Have a good summer.
Thank you.
We're just looking for a motion here. Thank you Counselor Krieviak for moving that counsel accepts the presentation by Portage College, providing an update on the institution's programs and operations as information. Any discussion? Seeing now the call for the vote.
I had some discussion.
You did?
No. I mean, I did have a comment, but it was.
That's carried, thank you. Okay, ten correspondence and information.
Thank you Deputy Reeve and Counsel. There is, there are pieces of correspondence attached to the agenda. Items ten point one to ten point one-two. I'd like to call your attention to one item. The Hang in the Thirties Invitation to Present, to Participate in Serving Beef on a Bun Supper. The event, a request will be sent out by the CAO's office requesting that you respond with whether you will attend or not. The request is for you to help assist in the serving of the beef on the bun as you have done in the past. So at this time, we'd request that counsel receives this correspondence for information.
Yeah, Counselor Sawyer.
Yeah, just, I had a bit of a concern about the memo from Lacine and County about RMA insurance. So how does, they said RMA insurance, but what's the name of the RMA insurance? It's, it's not RMA insurance, it's something else. It's. Now I can't recall. Anyway, so I guess my point is, we also use that same insurance company. Does, does anyone have any concerns at the MD with? I think it was Jubilee Insurance, isn't it?
Through the chair? I don't have the details of, of that particular claim in front of me, so I don't have all the details. Our insurance is through RMA and I don't believe it's Jubilee, but, but I can find that out for you if you'd like. What happens, because I have no information about the details of what occurred during that claim other than the letter that's attached to your correspondence, I couldn't say for sure what may have caused the problem. Typically, insurance is relatively straightforward and easy to deal with if you follow the, the prescribed agreements, so.
Yeah, but I guess I would just ask maybe that administration kind of look into that a little bit more and find out. Because they had a concern and they were kind of hoping that every member of RMA would kind of, you know, reach out and find out or at least, at least look into their own situations and find out, is there concerns that we should have that? Man, I thought, I think it's Jubilee Insurance and I thought they were doing a good job, so I'm not sure what happened there, but it'd be interesting to find out. Thank you.
Okay, just looking for a motion then to see the correspondence information. Okay, thank you Counselor Krieviak for moving that we receive the following correspondence. See where are we at here? One through twelve is information. Any discussion? Seeing now the call for the vote. That's carried. And we'll go to reports from members of council. Yeah, I think Counselor Krieviak requested to go first today.
Thank you. At ASB meeting, there's the Rural Beautification Tour on August the eighth. The Provincial Act Service Conference has been, is going to be in Edmonton in the next three years. So some counties are not happy because they can't showcase their area. And the Farm Family Awards have been canceled for two thousand twenty-four. We had an FCSS meeting, business as usual. We still need a policy on the senior transportation grant. I'm not sure what has, Al was talking with Bill. And something will be coming forward, I think, in the next council meeting, hopefully, to get things, the checks processed. Had a fireman's barbecue in Goodridge where we gave out some long service awards. And also went to the Goodridge Hall Farm Safety Presentation. We saw the drainage project that the MD contributed fifty thousand dollars for. They're still not quite finished, but very thankful for the, for the donation. That's it for me, thank you.
Counselor Sutcher.
Yeah, okay. June twelfth, I, we did an Iron Horse Trail meeting online Zoom. Their concerns, because about Glendon gaining grants for water, for the test study for water and they're concerned about maybe their trail and if that would go forth. So they're going to look at that. Then June fifteenth, I attended the Willa Prairie Farm Fair. Was a really good turnout, lots of displays they had, a lot of, a lot of participants. I was the judge at the rhubarb pie eating contest and it was really good. Tasted, I think it was eighteen pies, pieces. Then June seventeenth, I attended a Lara Board Meeting and said that Lakelish County has decided to drop out of Lara. They fear they can do it cheaper on their own, so we wish them the best and see what happens there, but puts a little strain on financially for the Lara itself. Then June nineteenth, met with Minister Todd Lowen and Deputy Reeve Crick and as well as Esther Miss Combeal. And it was a real good meeting, talked about the Canusu Ridge and about the fish hatchery, possibly in our fish limits and stuff. So was it promised a meeting that they're, they're looking into it all? And as well, I went to the Goodridge Hall Farm Safety Day on June twenty-second, saw the work that they did there. Great, they did great work and there was quite a number of people out there, so I'm glad that we're helping support this, these community halls that are active. That's all, thank you.
Counselor Sawyer.
I, I did attend the MD's, I think, what was it, Susan Olalapalooza or something, but it was a safety event at MD, Ardmore at the Outdoor Rink and they had a great day there. Everyone's kind of participated in a whole bunch of different, twenty-two different safety kind of exercises and events. So it was all, all fun and games and it was good. Everybody enjoyed that one. I had a waste reduction meeting yesterday. Everything's going on as it should be, I guess. We're looking at getting some cameras at, at some of the landfills so that they can actually monitor if someone comes in with a load of something that they shouldn't have there or they come in with a fridge or something full of food or whatever. There's, there'll be a few cameras around so that we can kind of track who's dumping what and where. It kind of goes hand in hand with the automated gate system, which is, seems to be working quite well actually, so. A little bit of talk about the Extended Producer Responsibility Program that now Alberta has signed up with and the MD has signed up with. And it's, it's just new to the MD here. So like one of the things that's going to happen is that the sites that we have pickup out the roadside with a bin, like Ardmore Fort Kent, some of the subdivisions have, have pickup at, at their street. As part of that Extended Producer Responsibility Program, we will be now collecting or attempting to collect glass, plastic, like all that kind of stuff that would maybe be thrown out. And so these, these, the company that's kind of run this program then will kind of handle that sort of thing happening. So I'm, I'm looking forward to it in Ardmore, I guess, because we have that pickup. And I have a garage full of bins with glass, plastic, tins, whatever that I take to landfill, so, and then put into the recycling bin. So anyway, that kind of stuff's coming and it should probably save us some money actually doing that, but that's it.
Thank you. On the twelfth, I had a Northern Alberta Development Council meeting. MLA Tanny Yow was doing stakeholder outreach with the Minister of Jobs, Economy and Trade. And MLA Seer was also in attendance. They were looking for information on how we want our region to find when planning for economic development. I, I suggested that Highway twenty-eight was very important to our region as well as pipeline capacity. Advocated for funding to follow students for whatever school choice as well. And then the fifteenth was RMHC Golf Charity Golf Tournament. And on the seventeenth, Counselor Krieviak covered our ASB meeting that we had. And then on the nineteenth, met with Minister Todd Lowen. Got to ask him about opening up a lot of the lakes. A lot of the lakes in this area are closed and a lot of people go to Saskatchewan to catch their fish because they're actually allowed to keep fish and eat it there. So he is working on opening up lakes for people to harvest and eat the fish out of our lakes in Alberta, which will be a huge plus for tourism in the Lakeland area. And had a BRFA meeting Thursday morning last week. One point from there was Global Medic donated a fire skid, kind of some kind of fire, probably a tank with a hose and a pump and stuff to, it's in the back of the deputy chief, regional, regional deputy chief's truck now. And that's for, if they're often the first one on scene when a call comes in and the, the pumper's are a minute or two behind and they can start putting a little bit of water on a fire and hopefully keeps stuff under control better. So that was donated by Global Medic, so we thank them for that. And had an FCSS meeting as well. And I think Counselor Krieviak covered that one too. And we're basically going to be looking at just processing the transportation grants in-house here as it should be, less red tape. So that's it for me. All right, we, we don't have any closed session today, so just looking for a motion. Thank you Counselor Krieviak for moving adjournment. I gotta get back on my meeting here so we can vote. All right, thank you. Yeah, that's carried. Thanks everyone.